... Justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Alves. Mr. Weiss.
Here.
Mr. Benz.
Here.
Mr. Carson.
Here.
Mr. Fry.
Here.
Mr. Polakowski.
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Love.
Here.
Julie Donovan.
Here.
Jacob Smithola.
Here.
I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome Julie to our table here. She's a pretty busy kid, so she hasn't made a meeting, but she's here tonight. Welcome, we're happy to see you.
Thank you.
Before we go any further, I'd like to invite the board to have a seat out front. We have a special treat for you tonight. As you know, we're doing the first musical production that we've done in about forty years. And the cast has asked if they could preview their show for you. And we're most happy to have them. So go have a seat and enjoy our talented kids.
Hello, my name is Erin Polakowski. I'm the student director's and production assistant for Southmoreland's first musical in forty years.
My name is Colin Chirbandy, and I'm another student director. This year we'll be performing Rogers and Hammerstein's Cinderella.
We also have another student director, his name is Jacob Smithola, and he runs our lights and sound.
Some may say that this story is too good to be true, but impossible things are happening every day. Our story begins with Prince Christopher wandering through the village, enjoying the freedoms that being normal can bring.
I thought I heard you.
No, no, I'm so.
No, no.
So much quality, girl. Remember, restrict all health. The joy, massive rock. He gave me the hairy-eyed ball.
He's too short.
But he laughs and fights, he makes up for cash.
Would you always say? Your world should never come up.
No, I said it's not only anyway.
The sweetest sound I've ever heard. I'll have my ear. I'll still inside my head. The kinddest words I'll have now are waiting to be said. The most attractive sight of all is yet for me to see. And the dearest love in all the world is waiting somewhere for me. Is waiting somewhere. Waiting somewhere. Somewhere for me.
Excuse me, oh, please, forgive me.
I do.
I mean, what's your name?
What's yours?
You know, I really think they grew up ready. I mean.
What's it mean? Exactly.
Well, it was nice, funky music.
You're very kind.
Everyone deserves to be treated with kindness and stuff.
But this moment is interrupted by a proclamation from Lionel, the royal steward, played by senior Ian Zimmerman. The prince is-
All right, gangway! Royal business, coming through, moving around in terms of our high council, how will we do it tonight? Good? Go out of my way, I'm walking here! Get some royal proclamation, hear hee, hear hee, all! Ah, it's gonna be special, don't you think?
The prince is giving a ball.
What?
The prince is giving a ball.
What?
The prince is giving a ball.
The prince is giving a ball. The prince is giving a ball.
Royal Highness Christopher Rupert. Prince of the ear, Vladimir, Carl Alexander. Prince of Reginald, Lancelot, Herman.
Herman.
Herman, Gregory James is giving a ball.
He's giving a ball, he's giving a ball, he's giving a ball. The prince is giving a ball.
Let me see one of those.
Oh, imagine running in here.
You're not gonna come by law, are you?
Oh, you're gonna meet a high society bad. Now here.
Every eligible young maiden in the kingdom is hereby to pay in due attention to the prince. Lionel, what's this all about?
Why, it looks like it's something to do with you.
Of course, I should've known. This has my mother written all over it.
The prince is giving a ball.
The prince is giving a ball.
His royal highness Christopher Rupert. Son of Her Majesty, Queen Constantina. Charlotte Earle. Granville Maisie.
Maisie.
Maisie, Marguerite Anne is giving a ball.
Oh, the royal, you're very kind. President of our majesty. The prince is giving a ball. He's begging us to sign the crime, make like what it's a law. It's only he proposed to me, why shouldn't he propose to me? Because he's the heavy close to me. The prince is giving a ball. The prince is giving a ball. I want that ten on us for the state, yes, I want it.
Now, if you please, your majesty, because you're trying to do. At least that's why it's. Surely I'll be a side of him, once I meet the place.
All this makes for a wreck of land!
Do you raise a grace? Limbergerties and gormandies.
Yeah, yeah.
Shanks of Swiss and barrels, please make sure that it's all be damned. Puddies and pies and rumps of praise, sunken in chocolate grounds.
Do you think so, children, or what?
To gain some royal pounds.
The prince is giving a ball. The prince is giving a ball. His royal highness.
Two hundred orchids, one hundred poppies, six hundred roses, eight hundred lilies.
Christopher Rupert.
One thousand oranges, two thousand plums.
Prince of the ear, Vladimir, brother.
Strawberry, blueberry, strawberry, gooseberry.
Prince of magical, Prince of heaven.
Son of Her Majesty. We have time now, can you?
Oh. Oh. Cindy. Cindy.
Frederick John is giving a ball.
Inside the royal hall.
The prince is giving a ball. Come on, come on.
He's giving a ball, he's giving a ball. The prince, the prince is giving a ball. Come on, come on.
He's giving a ball, but Prince Christopher is not happy. Let's see what the king, queen, and Lionel have to say.
Mother, what is the meaning of this? Doesn't this help? Not.
Darling, we were just talking about you.
Your mother's talking, I'm reporting.
And what is this, we're about to talk?
Why wasn't I talking about this ball that I supposed to be getting?
Oh darn, you're dumb now. It was supposed to be a surprise birthday party. Well, surprise.
It's three months into my birthday. And since when does a birthday party require the attendance of every eligible young maiden in the kingdom?
Well, that's funny. Oh, you know, this royal picture, they never get anything right.
Mother, I want this ball called off immediately.
Darling, you know, it's impossible, the castle wants you got the ball rolling.
Will you please just count me out? Your heights. Look, Chris, you aren't my buddy, you have certain obligations.
What your public's trying to say is that it's time to try and produce an heir. After all, to me, it's still a little yours.
Not that.
And, well, do you think bitter tatters, little freedom marvels again?
All I'm asking is to find a wife for myself, in my own time. I guess I just have this old-fashioned idea that I'm gonna fall in love before I get married, like you did. That's what we want for you two, son.
Of course it is, darling. Well, now that we have that all done, I prepare a short death warrant for your approval.
You haven't heard a word I've said.
Children's friends are really terribly intimate.
Your majesty, your highness. Oh, if I could compromise here, I probably should interfere. Probably. Have to agree to a real compromise?
Compromise?
What do you think this is, a democracy? What sort of compromise, Lionel?
Well, let's say you just start, you know, on the ball. I would love to, but you're so far.
If I agree, great. Yes, you do. Lionel, you're brilliant. Okay, I'll do it. But if I don't find the right rules of law, you'll let me fall in love in my own time, time, no matter how long it takes.
But.
And with no interference. That, well, it does have a certain logic to it.
Of course, darling, if that's the way you want it, that's the way it should be.
Thank you both. Now, son, something's one way to find a relationship. What's that? Dumb luck. Come around the table. Love you guys. What's up, darling, your majesty, if I'm finding a way to get the ball? I can feel my bones.
You'll feel it in your bones, you know that.
I hear that.
Max, because he doesn't find a way to get the ball, so then.
Yeah. I don't know where you're talking about. Don't know the way all the time.
Boys and girls like you and me walk beneath the sky. They love just as we love with the same dream in their eyes. Songs and kings and many kings have their day in their life. But boys and girls like you and me, we go on and on. They walk on every village street. They walk in places where bread and meat and stars turn out, but nothing from the food. They go through storms of doubt and fear. And so they go from here to the sea with me and each other as we do. Bravely marching, one by two by two. Boys and girls like you and me walk beneath the sky. They love just as we love with the same dream in their eyes. Songs and kings and many kings have their day in their life. But boys and girls like you and me, we go on and on.
Luckily for Lionel, Prince Christopher does meet the girl of his dreams at the ball. But if her stepsisters have anything to do with it, he may never see her again.
Did you hear your lover? Oh, it's later. Could you keep her name, baby?
She'll be a word, too. She must be a great miss or something. I'm sure she's built for her.
Well, she's well, she's cool. Why would a fellow with a girl like her, a really lovely beauty? Why can't a fellow ever watch screamer, a solid girl like me? I'm a lovely little wobble with a foot in her charm and a little trouble. I can play the little harp. Oh, oh, why would a fellow with a girl like her, who obviously unusual? Why can't a fellow ever watch screamer, a useful girl like me? Her cheeks are pretty shit of pink, but not any deeper than a rose. Her skin can be well taped on, but not any warmer than a dog. Her neck is no wire this long. She's not really gonna get big feet. She's overly intricate and a bird. So why is a fellow doing this? Oh, why would a fellow with a girl like her, a girl who's merely lovely? Why can't a fellow ever watch screamer, a girl who's merely neat with a problem little wobble? With a foot in her hair and a little trouble, I can pull her hair. Oh, oh, why would a fellow with a girl like her, a girl who's merely lovely? Why can't a fellow ever watch screamer, a girl who's merely neat with a matter with a man? With a matter with a man, with a matter with a man.
The next morning, we join the stepfamily at their manor house, where they find an unexpected guest.
Oh, right, girl. A lesson in counseling is teacher. Watch and learn. Oh, Lionel! What a pleasant surprise! I just knew there was something special. You'd be my, have you met her? You were obviously straight by her, but she's getting strong.
No, please, so much strength.
We straight above all else.
Presenting this girl like Prince Christopher. Ladies, I have searched for the maiden whose foot, if that's right, she lost the ball.
Really? Why? I would just say, my lovely daughter, Joy, just as very nice. I'm saying, Joy, look, that's what happens, you're on the shoe. That's an idea. I would say, there, I lost it. Well, this eye's here. Ow! Oh, that's my shoe, I know that shoe anywhere. Of course you would.
Sweetheart, Joy, the shoe is made of glass, it doesn't stretch.
Oh, please, later, sister, you know that my shoe. Yeah, it's a little. Oh, just give it, I didn't know the ball had a little.
I actually didn't.
Right before you came, I knocked my foot right out the back of my big toe, you're gonna break it. I don't know, we shut up, she's.
Are there any other women in the house?
Why? Yes, there is, one more. Move it!
I'm sorry, I meant to say younger one.
Oh, much younger.
Younger than you.
Oh, please, take one of my daughters. Joy has had charm and elegance. He's a hyperpicky pepper. He's very much my favorite. And, and, and great. That girl's as strong as an ox and a. How's it? Why? She's been recited. The rest of the series is three languages. Oh, four, I can't think of them. E, O, B, A, B. Español, E, I, 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 I swear, I swear. Too popular. I swear, I swear, I swear.
Listen, ladies, it's been a long day. So are any other young women in the house?
But you shut up! Well, there are other young women in the house. I'm here. What? I'm sorry, stepmother, but I am here. Sorry, ma'am. A serving girl. Oh, shoes, shoes, shoes.
You heard that sound like a woman in many towns, what's in play?
To find out if the slipper fits, come see the show March twenty-second through twenty-fifth in the S H S auditorium. The first three shows begin at seven P M., and the Sunday matinee will begin at two. We'll conclude our preview with fairy godmother Abby Whitlatch performing There Is Music In You.
You know who? Now you're living, there's music in you. Now you're hearing something new. Someone's playing the music in you. Now you're living, you know why. Now there's nothing you won't try. Move a mountain, rise the sky. Make a wish come true. There is music in you. There is music now. Wherever you want to go. Now you want to know. Whatever you want to do. Do whatever you want to. Now you can be whatever you want to be. Hear that love song, you will sing your whole life through. In you. There is music. Move a mountain. A mountain. Like the sky. Make a wish come true. There is music in you.
On behalf of the entire musical cast, crew, and staff, we would like to thank you for allowing us to do a preview tonight.
Well, thank you, you guys have really done a job, thank you so much. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, great job.
Excellent work. Tough act to follow.
Why does he call himself the head coach? He's not the head coach yet.
No, he's not. But he's a resident, so.
Oh, subject, I'm sorry, subject, okay.
Okay. Very good. I'm sure he'll be listening to a principal talk about student achievement, didn't he?
Yeah, right. From now on, I'd like them to represent like that.
We could do this every month.
No, I meant the president, or the principals.
Oh, yeah.
They should make a musical out of it.
They should. You ever heard Jan Clarison?
Those, those three there cracked me up.
Oh, they're hilarious.
They cracked me up. Wait, I've got this, wait.
There's a mother, the other, and the three sad blisters.
Yeah, I'm not sure I'm gonna check with Cindy.
Thank you.
She's a graduate of here. I think she'll hard, I'll tell you her name.
I was just thinking, she looks really familiar.
Little girl from this diner. I know it as well as I know my own.
I don't think you do.
No, you're right about that.
Okay, these citizens call that people know they have five minutes, right? Says all that on this, right?
Yeah.
He's been sporting a beard. He's really good there.
Randy Onder is her name.
He's got the beard going there. Like Brad. We could do a sharing for, for, uh.
For money.
For money, yeah.
For fundraiser.
Fundraiser.
That's a good idea.
I like that idea.
Signing up.
For beards. Keep going, Jason. I like that idea.
Are we ready? Anything other people have left?
See how many guys here, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, we could have eight of them.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter.
Citizens' comments.
Bryn Schorneski, please.
Hello, my name is Bryn Charneski, and I am here to represent on behalf of my team and Jay Lucia. I feel that Jay Lucia is the right coach for our team. I know that there may have been problems with other people, but with my experience and with my team's experience, you can see that we are here and that he is the right coach because he is a skillful and funny, well, he, um, excuse me, with a few past practices that we've had, he shows and gives us... He shows us things to improve us much, but he does it in a fun way and make us laugh. So, I believe that Jay Lucia is the right coach. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bryn.
Thank you.
Jay Lucia.
Hi, good evening, and I tell you, that's a hard act to follow. My name is Jay Lucia. I am coming before you as, I believe my name is in the mix for the middle school softball coaching position. I've been in education for seventeen years. I've been in athletic coaching and athletic management for the last thirteen. I'm a certified Level Two Administrator by the State of Pennsylvania, and I'm a current Head Principal of a building at the VOTEC in Charleroy, Pennsylvania. I come before you to support my team, to support the parents, I've supported the community for the last five years, and I tell you that I chose this school district before I chose to buy my house because I believe in the district, I believe in the academics, I believe in the extracurricular activities that support building the whole child and building a character of a good work ethic, putting forth a passion, and I stand before you to answer any questions that may be concerning in the decision-making of this position. Thank you very much.
Minutes.
It is recommended that the board approve the minutes of the February eighth, two thousand eighteen planning session and the February fifteenth, two thousand eighteen voting meeting.
Motion? Seconds?
Seconds.
Twenty seconds. Discussion? Roll call? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries? Accounts?
It's recommended that the board approve the February two thousand eighteen treasures report and the February two thousand eighteen accounts payable. Second.
Mr. Bryan? Roll call?
Mr. Beistow?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith? Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries? Budget meeting?
It's recommended that the board choose a date for a budget discussion meeting. Can open that for some discussion. Have a motion. Mrs. Rose?
Second?
Second. Discussion, then, what might be a good date that seems to fit everybody? Mr. Marnell, looking at, you know, where you are in the process, you know, what might be a good range that would be appropriate for a discussion session?
Very good question. One thing we'll need to do is internally look through the first draft once it's completed. See if there's any polishing up we need to do before we bring it out into public. We have a meeting, what, on the twelfth?
About the nineteenth.
Sixteenth through twentieth? Is that possible?
What you're going to find out a little bit later is our regular meeting, I believe, is on the nineteenth, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not going to be in town, I have a superintendent's forum that, well, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of that week, so I could be Monday or Tuesday, but I can't be here later on in the week. So, I was actually going to ask you later on to reschedule or to maybe cancel that voting meeting and make our first meeting of the month a voting meeting, but Monday or Tuesday of that week would be fine for me, but I can't speak for the board.
Monday or Tuesday, fine.
Yeah, it's fine for me. Jim? Heather? Mrs. Smith, you good?
Tuesday, the sixteenth? Seventeenth, excuse me. I'm gonna, I'm going to recommend that you don't meet on the nineteenth because I won't be here that day. So, well, maybe, sorry, where we can vote at the first meeting, then we'll have a budget meeting the following Tuesday. Yeah. Yes. April seventeenth for a budget meeting? Seventeenth, right?
Yes, seven o'clock.
Voice vote, Mr. Potonic or roll call?
Uh, roll call. Roll call, please.
Mr. Benz?
No, we should have had me a long time ago before that date.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Beistow?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries? Eight, one. Seven, one, one, all right.
Board reports?
Student report, please.
Congratulations to February's Spirit of Southmoreland student Joshua Lenke. Please see the attached list of graduates for two thousand eighteen. Please see the attached Y E A news for February and March. Lunch bunch, it happens once a month. Breakfast with the Easter Bunny at S E S Saturday, March seventeenth. Kindergarten kickoff at S P C Saturday, March twenty-fourth. Bunny Hop for Autism, S P C Wednesday, March twenty-eighth. Learning for Life at Hemfield Park. Kennewa tickets will go on sale March twenty-eighth at the high school during lunches in the cafeteria for twenty-six dollars. Please see the attached gems list for the second nine weeks. The junior and senior prom information. Ticket sales will be March nineteenth through twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen. The price will be eighty dollars. It'll occur on Saturday, May fifth, two thousand eighteen, at Edgewood Country Club. The doors will open at one thirty, pictures by impressions at one forty-five, and the grand march will be in the auditorium at three. Dinner will be served at five, and they'll arrive back to the high school around ten thirty.
Jocelyn Basado will represent Southmoreland at the Whipple Swimming Championships on March first and second at Tree's Pool on the University of Pittsburgh campus. Jocelyn's going to be swimming the one hundred freestyle and one hundred butterfly. She's currently seeded seventh in the top one hundred free and fourteenth in the one hundred fly. The top eight in each event receive medals, and the top four automatically qualify for the P I double A championships at Bucknell University on March fifteenth through the eighteenth. Some of the Alpha students recently competed in Einstein Minds at Mount Pleasant High School, and Dylan Obolinski placed second overall. Scheduling for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year began in February with high school teachers presenting to the eighth grade classes. High school students will be scheduling in March. Counselors are going to meet with them individually to discuss career paths. On the fourteenth of February, the ASVAB representative, Skip Powell, presented to all tenth grade students their individual summary results. Students completed a ninety-question interest inventory to aid in career exploration and how to pan, plan for different paths for entering the workforce. Students were able to create an account and use website through their high school career to seek technical programs, college, and universities to continue their education. On the thirteenth of this month, there was a student career fair. The event focused on the promotion of healthcare careers in STEAM, science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics topics. Healthcare professionals from these disciplines, which include lab, X-ray, nutrition services, information technology, finance, surgery, and others, will share their disciplines via engaging activities. The goal is to provide group and one-on-one interactions with our professionals, allowing students to explore the many career possibilities available in the healthcare industry, as well as preparations such as technical school, college, et cetera, for these careers and more. Olivia Ledbetter, a junior at Southmoreland Senior High School, recently donated twenty-eight handmade blankets to the Blackburn Center. The materials were purchased and blankets were made by students and staff at Southmoreland High School. Senior Justina Fasano led a group of thirty primary center students in an activity for the Hundredth Day of School Reading Buddies. Students spent time at the end of the day reading various books purchased through a grant by Dollar General and brainstormed ways to change this world if they lived for a hundred years. One kindergartner said that she would grow her hair for a hundred years and then donate to the little kids who need wigs. Southmoreland High School Secret Santas, both students and staff, joined efforts this holiday season and were able to donate over ten overflowing Santa sacks of gifts and needed items to Latrobe's Adolescent Mental Health Unit. The Mario Lemieux Foundation currently deployed soldiers at the Scottdale Food Pantry and two Southmoreland families. Sophomore pre-advanced placement English students are currently writing essays to enter in the National Anne Rand Foundation Essay Contest. Students will be entered to win two thousand dollars. Last year, junior Tony Ubreo was a semifinalist in this national competition. Students will be participating at the BOTS IQ preliminary competitions on Saturday, March seventeenth, two thousand eighteen, at Westmoreland County Community College in Youngwood, and this event is open to the public. The bracket for the competitions can be found on a link that I'm not going to read to you, and will be updated live after each battle. Team Fury will be going against Greater Latrobe High School, and Team Anthrax will be going against Punxsutawney Area High School in the first-round battles. Twenty area high schools will be present with a total of twenty-nine robots competing. All sixty-four participating schools, featuring eighty-five different robots, will be present at California University of Pennsylvania on April thirteenth and fourteenth. We'd like to thank and commend Mr. Pollard and the students from the commercial graphics class for preparing and printing the team t-shirts featuring the team logos, personalization for each member, and sponsors on the backs. There are some attached photos on there if you want to look. The class has recently completed projects for various other clubs and organizations in the district, including t-shirts, "The Future is Mine," and t-shirts for the cast and posters for the upcoming Cinderella Musical. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
C W C T C.
Dr. Marmar talked a little bit about operating budget last week. Budget has no increase from last year. Per student tuition has decreased from seven thousand six hundred dollars to seven thousand three hundred and twenty-three. Southmoreland's cost has increased because of projected enrollment of fifty compared to forty-six students previous year. Jack may be helping with this. Mark Long, C W C T C, Special Education Learning Facilitator, presented to the board a pilot program for discussion is for students with borderline disabilities. It will be similar to Claire View's program, giving students the best chance for career success. Class size will be limited to twelve. A M. and P M. students, first year of class would focus on career exploration and safety. The preliminary cost would be a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for salaries and supplies to start that program. I don't know if the PAC could discuss it or...
Yeah, you covered that pretty well. This is a program for students who normally would not be eligible for C W C T C based on their disabilities, but students who do need to have some kind of a productive career once they leave high school. So, this would provide a learning support teacher, special education teacher, and eight, I think it was one of each, am I correct, Jason?
Yes.
And that person would go with this group of students from shop to shop as they explore various careers for the first year, and then I believe they were going to maybe expand on that a little bit the second year, is that correct?
He didn't say that.
Okay.
We're waiting to hear from the PAC committee to see if, uh, if they're on board with it, if they have some students from the seven districts that we, you know, they'll participate, and then we're going to probably discuss it more.
There was a PAC meeting scheduled for Wednesday, but it was canceled because most superintendents were attending to the National Walkout Day, which I'll talk about a little bit later. So, that meeting was canceled, so we didn't really have a chance to get together and discuss. So, I'm sure we'll do that at the April meeting.
Another thing, like Southmoreland and many other districts, C W C T C is taking a look at their emergency preparedness programs and policies. Point Security has performed building threat assessments, and J O C. will be informed of the results during the next meeting. And we also, we awarded busing services to Grooms Transit, and they were the only bidder. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
W I. report. We approved our eighteen-nineteen general operating budget. It is five point four million dollars. We also granted permission for them to solicit for bids for the construction and renovation of the auditorium. They're doing a whole new auditorium up there. And just a reminder that April eighth is the W I. U. Foundation Bingo Bash at twelve-thirty at Rizzo's.
So, next month, I will present the W I. U. operating budget for your consideration because you also have an opportunity to vote on that. Just a little clarification on the auditorium project. That auditorium was put in maybe ten to fifteen years ago. At some point during the construction, on a weekend, the general contractor pulled up stakes and left, and another contractor was then hired to come in and finish the project. There are some issues with the project in terms of its stability. There are concrete stairs in that auditorium. However, the concrete stairs are cracking, pulling away from the wall, breaking down. I think it has to do with the base and the foundation that were put there. I don't know which contractor did that, the first or the second, but it was a very less-than-adequate project in terms of how it performed. Right now, if you go there, there are cones and caution tape on certain parts of the steps that you can't walk on for fear you fall into an abyss. So, they're going to try to do that, it's my understanding. They're going to try to level all that out, turn it into a more of a meeting room than an auditorium situation. But the rationale behind that is they have a room that's becoming unsafe and unusable, so they need to do something about it.
P S B A. report?
Yes. As students staged a walkout across the country to press for tighter gun controls, Congress took modest steps yesterday to prevent, um, to prevent in classrooms, invite, you know, violence in the classrooms. The House overwhelmingly passed the first federal legislation to address gun violence or school safety since the February fourteenth tragedy in Florida. Lawmakers passed the Stop School Violence Act of two thousand eighteen. It reauthorizes a program created in two thousand one through the Justice Department to prevent threats against schools. The legislation authorizes fifty million to intens, intensify school security, pay for federal, quote, threat assessment teams, end quote, to help schools, to help school districts sort through reported threats, create an anonymous reporting system so that students and others can report threats, and pay for training and technical assistance programs for law enforcement and school officials to help identify potentially violent behavior. behavior. So at least they're making a step forward, I believe, and that's always a good thing. So what's going to shake out of this, I don't know, but at least we have something started. So that ends my report.
Report on the Anti-Moleine Committee?
Yes, we met one time and had representatives from each building in the district. I have to say, I was very impressed with the reports that each building representative gave, and I feel that we're on the right path. So, you know, we scheduled the next meeting, actually, next week, and then we're going to proceed with, the next step would be to maybe identify plans or plans of actions that we might want to take. So that's what I have. I didn't know, Dr. Molnar, did you want to add anything to that?
I think you covered it pretty well. Some of the folks that were there talked about mental health, some of the folks talked about some programs that are out there that do exist, the Alveius Program came up as one that is research-based. It also, we know, takes a lot of time to implement that program, so we'll be looking at some of those programs, in addition to evaluating the effectiveness of what we're already doing.
Yeah, I guess just to add to that, there could be, we might look into maybe having some assemblies and, like you said, the programs and touch base with the students on that.
Right.
Report on the School Safety Committee?
Yes. We held our first meeting this past Monday, March twelfth. We had about fourteen, fifteen people there, including administrators, a few school board members, teachers, a couple citizens. Basically, we didn't really have, really have an agenda to go by, so we just sort of made it kind of open floor to, you know, get everyone's fill and everyone's ideas of what they thought was important, and it was a good experience, a good first meeting. The main thing we pretty much all agreed on is the addition of another armed officer at the schools. That, and we discussed some fundraising. I plan on putting together a meeting in the next two weeks to, you know, revisit everything and have it a little more organized and try to get some more people involved and go from there. But we, I brought in Christie Smith, she's the president of the PTA, to present her fundraising idea.
Hello. My name's Christie Smith. I'm the president of the PTA. I was at this safety meeting with Jim. One of the things that we discussed, and as a representative of PTA, was to have a fundraiser of a district-wide spaghetti dinner. The goal of this would be twofold. One would be to raise funds for the much-needed school security, safety measures. After talking to Mr. Kiefer, he has a wish list of different things that he would like, with the priority ones being at the top. And the second goal would be to bring the community together to show its support of our school district and the teachers, staff, and children. So our goal is to raise forty thousand dollars. This would be used for the rest of this school year, knowing that the budget's probably not there this school year. We are going to do this through ticket sales, through sponsorships from businesses and families, through t-shirt sales, we will have basket raffles, and a bake sale at the spaghetti dinner. Our hope is to have it at the elementary school, and if it gets too busy, to keep this cafeteria open as well, to send crowds down here. I am ready to go with this, pending board approval. We talked about it a lot at the safety meeting. I have, I think that the flyers and everything that I have made were on your info, but if you need hard copies, I have one for everyone if you would like it. I am just waiting for the go-ahead to go ahead and start planning. We have it tentatively scheduled for Saturday, April fourteenth, from three to seven, so I'm waiting for your approval. Thank you. Do you have any questions about how we will collect funds, how we will disperse, anything?
Tyler, will you open your own bank account up to keep this or how you're going to distribute the money?
The PTA has a bank account. We are audited every year. We have our taxes done, and we will keep it as a line item, and then we will take those funds and make a donation to the school, and they can disperse them as needed.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So when we get to new business, we'll walk a motion onto the floor for the board's approval and support of the fundraising. And then, under personnel, we will discuss the addition of, as Mr. Carson talked about, an additional armed officer as well.
Okay, thank you.
That's, that would conclude my report.
Thank you. Superintendent Report?
Yeah, during the past month, I attended a meeting of the Westmoreland County Superintendents' Association. It was kind of a busy month here at the district, so I did not attend the healthcare consortium meeting today. Mr. Marnell did attend that and gather information for me, or the workforce development meeting. And as I mentioned earlier, the C W C T C Professional Advisory Council meeting was canceled for this month. I wanted to offer congratulations to Jayden Dats and Tyler Griffiths, both of whom were medalists at the P I double A Wrestling Championship Tournament in Hershey. Also, congratulations to the middle school STEM teacher Gavin Sikorski and his students. They were featured as P S E A's Learning Lessons for March two thousand and eighteen in the P S E A publication. This recognition featured the prosthetic hands that our students manufacture and fit. During the past months, we've made some procedural changes with respect to school security, limiting access to individuals who are not students or staff. This is probably a bit of an inconvenience and an adjustment, but a necessary step in light of the recent school violence events. Last month, you had asked me to check on the price of gates to cordon off the hallways here at the middle school. The latest estimate that I have is approximately twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars to make all that happen. I had the pleasure of chaperoning our marching band trip on their trip to Disney World where they debuted their new uniforms. Ours was the only marching band performing on the day that we were there, and I can tell you that our kids represented Southmoreland very well, not only as they performed, but through their conduct during the entire trip. I was really proud of them. March fourteenth was the National Walkout, School Walkout Day to protest school violence. A group of students worked cooperatively with teachers and administrators to coordinate this student-sponsored event. Approximately a hundred and fifty of our high school students participated in seventeen minutes of silence at the high school commons area. Plans are underway for another activity on April twentieth that will afford students the opportunity to participate in concrete activities that are designed to have an impact on future school violence, as well as the victims of previous school violence. We interviewed a number of individuals for the accounts payable secretary to the business manager, and we will make a recommendation to you later this evening. We've also scheduled interviews for next week for the payroll secretary position. And as I mentioned a few minutes ago, I will be out of town on April nineteenth at a superintendent's forum. Perhaps the board might want to consider posting April twelfth as the voting meeting in light of the fact that we may have one more budget meeting during April or May, and obviously, we've scheduled that already. So that will come up later as a, as an agenda item. Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Can I have a question?
Yes, sir.
Did anybody take any movies of them children, I mean, our students down at Disney World, the way they come through the parade and everything?
Yes.
I think it'd be very nice to put that on the Scotty Channel to just show what our students at this school can do that far away from home and be as good as they was and the way they perform.
I can attempt to put it on the Scotty Channel. And Mr. Pollard, is that something we can make happen? Okay, Chris says we can do it. That's beyond my technological expertise, but yeah, we can do that. Good idea, Mr. Beistel, thank you.
Solicitor's report?
On your agenda are two items that have been worked on since the last meeting. Shan, one is a proposal from Hayden Appraisal Services of Greensburg to perform a professional appraisal of the value of the Rustell Elementary School for a fixed sum of two thousand five hundred dollars within four weeks' time of getting, being given a notice to proceed. And I handed out immediately prior to the beginning of the meeting, a more detailed resolution for consideration of approval of contracted school bus transportation that contains all of the financial numbers in it and a little bit of explanation as to what you're doing is, when you get to that, you would be voting to reject the first proposal by Grooms Transit and go with a negotiated lower price, which does not include a performance bond, but contains substantial reductions. And there were no other proposals, compliant proposals, or for that matter, any other proposals submitted at all. So Dr. Molnar consulted with me, and based upon a clause in the initial request for proposals, you are permitted to actually negotiate a lower price and modification of the proposal that's being made. When you are ready to ask for an executive session, I would ask you to include, if we're to include discussion related to Muti versus Southmoreland School District Consolidated Number eleven, twenty, and twenty-eleven, I'll have a report to give you in executive session briefly. That concludes my report.
New business?
Transportation contract. I believe Mr. Potonic has given you a resolution on that. So David, I understood what you just said, but I'm going to ask you to kind of lead, lead the charge on this so that we do it correctly.
Because this involves rejecting the first proposal and then adding a new one and then incorporating into it the basic language of the form of the contract that was previously utilized, I felt it necessary to do all this. Where Southmoreland School District had advertised and sought proposals for contracted bus, school bus transportation for school year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen through school year twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three, whereas Grooms Transit, Inc., doing business as Quest Transit, here and after contractor, with its principal offices at fifty-five-oh-six Scottsdale Dawson Road, Scottsdale, PA one-five-six-eight-three, submitted the only compliant proposal, and in fact, the only proposal. Whereas pursuant to section twenty-eight of the specifications under award, the school board will not be required to make an award entirely on the basis of the lowest bid in dollars and reserves the right to reject any and all proposals and/or to modify the terms of the proposals to protect the interest of the district. Whereas the administration negotiated and sought further reductions in price and costs, including requesting proposals without a performance bond being required. Whereas contractors submitted additional proposals without a performance bond requirement, which was initially required by section twenty-one of the specification, the last and lowest being dated February twenty eighth, twenty eighteen, which is hereby incorporated by reference and to be attached to the minutes. And it did attach it to the form resolution so you can see all the numbers for the different years. Whereas it is recommended that the school board make an award to contractor based upon the alternate proposal of February twenty eighth, twenty eighteen, and waive the provision of section twenty-one for a performance bond. Now therefore, on motion, it resolves that. Above preamble's are incorporated by reference. Number two, the board rejects the initial proposal of Grooms Transit, Inc., but accepts the subsequent proposal of February twenty eighth, twenty eighteen, without a performance bond, and awards the contract to contractor with a base price for daily runs as listed on the schedule as follows. Year one, twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, one million six hundred three thousand three hundred forty-six dollars. Year two, one million six hundred forty-three thousand four hundred fifty-two dollars. Year three, one million six hundred eighty-four thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars forty-four cents. Year four, one million seven hundred twenty-six thousand six sixty-nine and four forty-four cents. And year five, one million seven hundred sixty-nine thousand eight hundred forty-nine dollars fifty-two cents. The award should be made final upon the contractor executing written contract in the form of the existing contract for people transportation, twenty thirteen, fourteen school year through twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, specifically including the provisions for fuel cost adjustment in section eighteen of the current contract, which is hereby incorporated by reference, and accept as modified by terms of sub A, the request proposal, sub B, the contractor's submitted proposal, but without the January twenty-four, twenty eighteen total proposed price, base price for daily runs for the five years in the contract remuneration, form with yearly daily rates per vehicle type and for the five years. See contractor's alternate proposal with financial terms without a bond, and that is attached here, the year, and the complete breakdown of the bus run and the routes. But with total proposed proposal price, base price for daily runs for the five years in the contract remuneration form with yearly daily rates per vehicle type and for the five years, copy attached. D, the addition that the school district shall supply the video equipment at its cost for passenger occupant monitoring, and the contractor will supply the radio equipment for each vehicle. Twenty eighteen, twenty thirteen tentative bus replacement schedule, that is a complete list of the vehicles that would be purchased and the timeline as to when they would be purchased by the contractor to replace some of the existing buildings. The idea is to keep the average age below six years old for state transportation reimbursement formula purposes. And the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school vehicle list dated February twenty-six, twenty eighteen, with a list of routes for the specific types of vehicles, and all in a form acceptable to the solicitor within twenty days of the enactment of this resolution, which the president's authorized and directed to also execute, and the secretary to attest on presentation by the solicitor.
Call for motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second motion.
Do we need, we need another discussion, do we? Roll call, please.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Cry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero, or, yes, nine zero.
New business?
Last week, you had asked me to develop a resolution supporting school safety and reducing school violence, so I have done that. Whereas school violence has become an epidemic in the United States of America, and whereas the children and school employees of our nation have the right to attend school without fear of death or injury, and their families have the right to send them to school without the same fear. And whereas there is a mutual responsibility of all citizens to address this problem, and the responsibility for preventing violent incidents cannot be relegated to school districts alone. And whereas multiple studies have shown that the majority of Americans expect action to eliminate violence in our schools, and whereas school board members, administrators, employees, and community members should work together with lawmakers, legal counsel, law enforcement, and security experts to determine how to best ensure student safety in their district. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Southmoreland School District implores the President of the United States, the Governor of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the United States Congress, and the Pennsylvania General Assembly to prioritize the protection of students and school employees by enacting legislation with adequate funding for the following. Enhance mental health services and substance abuse treatment so that all individuals, including children, have sufficient access to these services. Increase access to school safety measures, including but not limited to school resource officers, school police officers, school safety infrastructure, and other security measures designed to protect students and staff from an active shooter or other unwanted intruder on school grounds. Training for school employees and enhance coordination with law enforcement agencies and first responders to ensure appropriate responses to incidents of violence in schools, and finally, protection of students and school employees from any act of violence. So we would look for a motion in a second to... So we would look for a motion in a second to adopt the attached resolution supporting school safety and the reduction of school violence. Direct the Secretary of the Board to send executed copies to Governor Tom Wolf, Senator Patrick Stefano, Representative Ryan Warner, Representative Justin Walsh. I just have one comment. I applaud Christie Smith and Mr. Carson for coming up with the idea of the spaghetti dinner to support school safety. We shouldn't have to have spaghetti dinners and bake sales to protect our kids. I think it's ridiculous that we have to do that. And I think it's very important that our tax dollars at the state and federal level should be helping us to fund these so that we have safe schools, hardened targets, whatever you want to call it, to keep our guys safe here. My editorial comment, for what it's worth.
Roll call please.
Mr. Cry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Resolution opposing ESA voucher programs?
I believe Mrs. Rhodes talked about the educational savings account last month, was it, Mrs. Rhodes? And basically what this does, it provides vouchers for students regardless of their income level to attend cyber schools, private schools, parochial schools, whatever kind of schools they wish if they currently attend an underperforming school. The problem with that is it takes tax dollars away from historically underfunded schools, especially many of our underperforming schools are underperforming because they're underfunded. So I do have a resolution there. I will defer to the wisdom of the crowd if you want me to read it or if you've already read it. I won't go into the whole thing, so that's up to you.
Did you guys read it?
Everybody have a chance to look at it?
You don't have to read the whole thing.
Perfect. I would if you wanted me to. So therefore, it's recommended that the board adopt the attached resolution opposing the education savings account voucher program and direct the Secretary of the Board to send executed copies to Governor Tom Wolf, Senator Patrick Stefano, Representative Ryan Warner, and Representative Justin Walsh.
Make a motion?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
I believe parents should be allowed to pick the best possible education for their children, so my answer is no.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one, no.
Proposal of Ruffstall School.
It's recommended that the board authorize administration to engage the services of Hayden Appraisal Services to conduct an appraisal of the Ruffstall School building per the attached resolution. Mr. Potonic covered that in his report, so I won't cover it again.
Motion?
So be it.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Subagreement 2018-19 school year.
It's recommended that the board approve the National School Lunch Program Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture, updating the current agreement to a permanent agreement.
Motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Second.
Is this one of those things that's just a formality?
Yes.
Assume that.
Yeah, it basically is, you know, we will serve the correct kind of nutritious food that we're required to serve in exchange for aid, you know, accepting the dollars that are provided to us. So yeah, Mike, good question, but yes, it is.
Why do you have to relate to the Mrs. Obama lunch program?
No, no.
Okay.
Matter of fact, this is something that we've always just done, but I thought maybe it should have board approval, so that's why I added it to the agenda.
Thank you.
Roll call please.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
CWCTC budget.
It's recommended that the board approve the 2018-2019 Annual Student Assistance Program Agreement.
Motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Now CWCTC budget.
It's recommended that the board approve the 2018-19 Central Westmore Career and Technology Center operating budget. I think Mr. Polakowski talked a little bit about that tuition per student has gone down. Ours, our estimate went up a little bit because they're predicting four more students to attend at the end of the year. There's always a reconciliation, so if we don't have the number of students they're predicting, we would obviously get money back.
Motion?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Camco renewal contract.
It's recommended that the board renew its contract with Camco for the provision of physical therapy and occupational therapy services at the rate of $65 per hour, which is the same hourly rate as the previous two contracts.
Motion?
So be it.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Potential graduates.
It is recommended that the board approve the list of potential 2018 high school graduates pending completion of all graduation requirements and satisfaction of all obligations, with the exception of Julie Donovan and Jake Smithula. Just kidding, guys.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, or roll call?
We'll amend that motion to include their names, by the way.
Roll call?
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
April board meetings?
It's recommended that the board post the April 12, 2018 meeting as a voting meeting and cancel the April 19, 2018 meeting.
Motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
One more item to walk on at the recommendation of the Safety Committee. It's recommended that the board approve fundraising activities recommended by the Safety Committee, including but not limited to a spaghetti dinner. And that is a walk-on item, so we'll accept comments from the public. Hearing none, we'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
So be it.
Discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Have a motion to recess for personnel?
And litigation.
Litigation. Mr. Beistel?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes. Sorry, this is not going to be as good as Cinderella. Jeopardy music.
Almost.
Drive to Bangles.
Waiting for Mr. Superintendent who needs to make a quick switch here because he made a little whoops.
You're down to nine minutes, Amy.
I know, I said we were going to have this wrapped up in eleven minutes.
My fault, Mr. Alt. Okay, I'm ready. I neglected to put an effective date in the first motion coming up here, and I thought that might be important.
Do I have to bang the gal or can I just call for reconvene? Motion to reconvene?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
All right.
Personnel?
It's recommended that the board accept with regrets the resignation for the purpose of retirement of Lynn Huggins, Food Service Director, effective August 20, 2018, and authorize administration to post and advertise the position.
So be it. Second.
Discussion? Roll call? Roll call?
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
With regrets, yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Supplemental resignation head driver for marching band.
It's recommended that the board accept the resignation of Jim Springer from the supplemental position of head driver for the marching band and authorize administration to post the position.
So be it.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Resignation of custodian.
It's recommended that the board accept with regrets the resignation of Tony Miller as high school custodian.
Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Resignation of food service employee.
It's recommended that the board accept with regrets the resignation of Angela Johnson, food service employee, effective March 16, 2018, as a full-time employee, and approve her as a substitute food service employee on an as-needed basis.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Accounts payable business manager secretary.
It's recommended that the board promote Joanne Lane to the position of accounts payable business manager secretary at a salary of $43,050.57 with benefits, and authorize administration to post and advertise the position of high school guidance secretary.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Assistant high school football coaches.
It's recommended that the board approve the following assistant varsity football coaches at the recommendation of the head coach, David Watnawski and Tom Bukowski, at supplemental salaries of $4,413 each for the 2018-2019 school year.
Motion? Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Who made the second? Who made the second? I couldn't hear.
Mr. Frye.
Okay. Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries nine, zero.
Head middle school softball coach.
It's recommended that the board approve Jay Lucia as head middle school softball coach, with supplemental salary of $2,857.
Motion?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
No.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one, no.
FMLA request.
It's recommended that the board approve an FMLA request for high school Spanish teacher, Lauren Elliott, from August 23, 2018 through November 19, 2018, and then an unpaid parental leave from November 20, 2018 to January 2, 2019.
Motion?
No move.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries nine, zero.
Hiring of food service employees.
It's recommended that the board let the following individuals be hired as food service employees, as replacement positions due to resignations and employee transfers to other positions. Two-hour middle school server and cashier, Caleb Ricker, and two-hour elementary school dishwasher, Judith Lidle.
Motion?
So be it.
Second? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries nine, zero.
Substitute food service.
It's recommended that the board approve Amanda Stahl as a day-to-day cafeteria substitute. Clearances are up to date and on file.
Motion? Mr. Alt? Mr. Beistel? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries nine, zero.
Substitute custodians.
It's recommended that the board approve Douglas Aller and Denise Bates as substitute custodians, pending receipt of clearances.
Make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Motion carries nine, zero.
Approval of casual professional employee.
It's recommended that the board approve the employment of Sarah Opolinski as a casual professional employee.
Mr. Cross, a second?
Do you have a rate of pay?
Pardon me?
Is there a rate of pay?
General fund.
The rate of pay.
She would be paid at the substitute rate.[1053.08]